I'll call the meeting to order, just for everyone's recollection. This is the organizational meeting of the Board of Commissioners this afternoon. And a couple of items down on the agenda, they will elect a chair for the upcoming year. And until that point, I will serve as the temporary chair for this meeting. So in doing so, I've called the meeting to order, and I'd ask everyone to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd ask if everybody would remain standing, and I ask Michelle Foster Becker Leggins, she would please deliver her invocation.
Absolutely, let us pray. Thank you, God, for the gift of this day, and the light that shines in the darkness in this season leading to Christmas. As we gather tonight, we are especially mindful of our neighbors in Moore County who are without power this very moment. We pray protection, wisdom, and safety on all who work tirelessly to restore power, and we pray all residents may have warmth and shelter in the midst of this cold night. Bless the work that we are about tonight, and guide us always to love our neighbor even as we love ourselves. In the name of Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, so I would ask for a motion to consider such. So move, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Four to zero. Next item is a motion on the minutes from November the 21st. I trust everyone's had an opportunity to review those, so I would entertain a motion for the acceptance of those.
Motion to second.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those, please raise your right hand in support. Four to zero. Next item's public comment time. If there's anyone in the audience would like to come forward and address the board. Seeing none, we'll close public comment time. And the next item is to elect a board chair for the upcoming year. So at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for chair.
Nominate Bobby Irwin.
Second that motion.
Have a nomination of Bobby Irwin and a second? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would ask that a motion be considered to close nominations.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Four to zero. And now the vote for the chair. We have one nomination of Bobby Irwin, and a second, motions to close nominations. So all those in support of Bobby Irwin for the upcoming year for chair, please signify by raising your right hand. Four to zero. Congratulations, Commissioner Bobby Irwin. Floor's yours.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you all. Michelle, I hope you're feeling a little better. The next item of business is to elect a board vice chair, and open that up for nominations.
I make a motion to nominate Michelle as vice chair.
Second.
You second? We've got a nomination for Michelle for vice chair, and we have a motion and a second. Is there any other nominations? If not, I'll move that be closed. All those in favor of closing that, signify by saying aye. Raise your right hand. All those that are in favor of Michelle Luffman being elected as vice chair, signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. Motion carries four oh. Next on the agenda is to appoint the clerk to the board, and that would be Drew Todd. I need a motion and a second, please. Got a motion and a second for Drew Todd to be appointed as clerk to the board. All of those in favor, raise your right hand. Four oh. Appoint the county attorney. That's next on the agenda, is the appointment of county attorney, and that would be Heather Klein. I need a motion and a second, please. Got a motion.
I'll second.
And Greg's second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Raise your right hand. I'm sorry, I'm used to a different board. View and revise board appointments. That's on page five through 10, and I think there needs to be some discussion about Commissioner John Irwin, who has been off these committees for the last six, seven months, something like that. I think there's a time and a place that everybody deserves a second chance. That's my comment. I would like anybody else to have anything to say about that.
I think that we only did this action in what, July of this year? Has there been enough time go by? Especially considering last week's childish display of behavior. That's all I have to say about that.
Me a call mail?
Since I've not had to work with John, I mean, this is gonna be, I have to defer to Michelle and your advice. Do not, when we come up here, you know, when we're invited to do this, I don't want to do anything to make our job any harder, and only you all know, because you've had to deal with him for the last couple years, or few years. So I don't want to get in a situation where we turn that loose, and then it's hard to back it down. I agree, I believe in second chances too, but at the same time, I'm a little bit hesitant about that until we get more info, we see more signs of some better actions. What's your thoughts, Greg?
My thoughts is, he was elected by the people, let him represent the people. You know, give him another chance, put him on some boards.
I think that it's been roughly six months since he's been off these committees. We have roughly 31 committees that we have, and it takes amount of time for those commissioners to serve on all those committees. There was a board action to remove John from those committees, and it would take a board action to let John back on those committees. I don't know that, I think everybody deserves a second chance. I think that what John did with Commissioner Osburn's tearing his name off the mailbox, that didn't sit well with the board. I can speak for myself, but I think also, the old board, it did not speak well. I don't know if it would be a benefit if we let John come back on and serve on a few committees till our next reassignment, which would be next December. Or I don't know that there's a provision to modify the committees during, between now and December of next year. So with that being said, I think it comes to a vote by this committee to let John back on on a limited basis, maybe two or three committees, or something in that range. I think he's expressed a desire to our county manager to be on some of those committees. So I, Michelle, would you think we would need to vote as a board, because the board took him off those committees?
I would think so, yes.
I would open up the floor to a motion. It'll take a motion and a second to approve John to come back on board at a limited number of committees, maybe that two or three number, and we'll see how he behaves. So I'll just leave it up to the board. I need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to put him back on the committees.
I would like to say that I too believe in second chances. I'm a very big proponent for second chances. I think that you have to warrant deserving a second chance before you're granted a second chance. That's just where.
Said, I have to defer to you guys, because I don't have any one way or (bleep) on stuff y'all had to deal with, you know.
You have a motion on the floor, and it takes a second to call for the vote. Discussion on my part is, is your motion to include two or three committees?
Two or three, I don't even know what he asked for. I think Mr. Carter over there's got the list he asked for.
So my question is, has John made any efforts to say, you know, I'm sorry about this, or some of the things that he's done, said, or?
To me personally, he has not made any comment one way or the other. I don't know if he's apologized to.
The individuals.
To the individuals that, for the county employees, and for the committees outside of the county. I don't know, I don't know that he has. I can't say yes, and I can't say no. Mr. Carter, how many committees did he ask to be on? Just the total number.
Five.
Would your motion include two or three? You need to make a number.
I'll make a motion, put him on three.
We need any other discussion? We need a second.
I'll tell you what, if you keep it to two, we'll go along with that goes.
We'll make it two.
Here's the deal.
You amend your.
I'll amend it, I'll go with two.
Well, here's the deal, is you all did it one time. If he does, if he gets in there and muddies up the mess again on two, you can pull him out again. So it's, maybe it's an opportunity for him, but I do it reluctantly, but at the same time, John's getting out of a lot of work.
Exactly. I think as commissioners, we all do a lot of work, and it's gonna be, I think it'll be a little bit of a surprise to you and to Greg, the amount of work that we have to do. It's not like it was 15, 20 years ago, the commissions changed a lot. So you modify your.
I'll make the motion, put him on two committees right now.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to put John on two committees at this time. Any other discussion?
I think, yeah, I think in doing that too, I don't think it's asking too much, and just say, hey, you know, we agreed to do it a couple times, and we expect, you know, tickets. In other words, there's no more we expect out of John than we do ourselves. So we're not asking anything out of him that we wouldn't ask of ourselves. So I think we just, we try to give him a shot, I guess.
I agree. And I think those comments need to be in the record, that if that, if John steps out of line again, that the board will reconsider the committees that he's on.
I'm just curious, Mr. County Manager, what committees was he asking for?
He requested consideration on the following committees. First one was the Budget Committee. The next one was the Council on Aging. The third one was the Virginia Carolina Water Authority. The fourth one was the Allegheny County Group Home. And the last one is the Vaya Board.
Was which one?
Vaya.
Vaya. That answer all your questions?
Yes, I would be willing to vote on this as long as.
Michelle, I think the motion though, is are we gonna approve him to be on?
To.
Any committees, and then we'll assign them.
Okay.
Greg has made the motion to allow him for two committees. Tim has seconded that. Any other discussion? I call for the vote. All those in favors, raise your right hand. All those opposed, three to one. Thank you. Now, we go into the appointment of the committees. I'll just read the very first one, is Allegheny County Agricultural Advisory Board. That carries one commissioner. I'm on that right now, I'd like to stay there. The next one, Allegheny County Public Library Board. That has been vacated, that position is open. Volunteers? The library?
I'll take the library, there's nobody else.
You'll go for the library? Okay, Greg, thank you. Keeping up. Group Home, that was Bill Osborne, and this is one that Commissioner John Irwin asked to be on? I would, does anybody else express an opinion on being on that, or let John be on that? We'll give that to John Irwin.
May I just clarify one thing, with the motion that has been made and adopted? Right now, we are talking about committees that are outside of the county, these are agencies outside the county operations. I just want to be sure that I understand it correctly. We have a number of what I call internal committees that are later on this schedule of appointments. So just to remind the board, if the limit is two, there's a good chance that before we get to, and I'll just read from it, the nominating, the insurance, the recreation, the ordinance, the internal committees, that needs to be understood.
Those are basically ad hoc committees, aren't they?
The motion was two committees. It didn't specify any. It didn't specify any sequence or, or relevance. It just identified two.
Doing two external committees for the him and just do that, that?
I think that the, the committees that John has requested are basically the main committees that we serve, except for the Budget Committee.
That's correct.
And the Budget Committee is not appointed till usually January. And that is, that is historically been served by the chairman and the co-chair. So I think in January.
Chairman and vice chair.
I mean, vice chair.
That's historically what it has been.
So I think that will come to play, come into play in January or either the first or second meeting in January, depending on your time schedule for the, for the budget to begin next year.
So you don't do a Budget Committee now?
No, we don't do that until it'll be January.
But you can pick a Budget Committee now?
Yes.
I think that's probably what you should do. Go ahead and pick your Budget Committee now.
Well, we don't know, we've never done it this early.
Well, I mean, as far as who's going to be on the Budget Committee, it doesn't matter. See what I'm saying?
I plan to, I plan to make an announcement at your first meeting in January identifying the deadline for budget submittals. So we're right around the corner to making that announcement. So I, I just, I just don't want us to get caught up in keeping track of one or two or whatever, and then we get down here to these internal committees and there's no room for that.
Well, when we get down to that part, we'll deal with that. So for right, we put John on the Group Home. Next one is Appalachian District Health. I've been on that. I'd like to stay.
You sure you want to, do you want to stay on it? Because I'd like to be on it if you consider, is it something?
I've, I've been on that for six years now.
Okay.
It's a, it's a pretty complicated board and I really enjoy it.
All right.
Blue Ridge RC and D Board. That was Bill Osburn's before. Greg, Timmy?
I don't mind serving on that board.
Michelle will take that. Council on Aging, I'm on that board and my wife started Council on Aging many, 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 many moons ago, and I'd like to stay on that board. Port House Security and Renovation, that's a double commissioners committee meeting. Mark was on that before and he served with me. That committee, we sort of meet at the pleasure of the judges or if there's some, some important issues coming up for the board about the security and the renovation. Does need a volunteer? I'd like to stay on that board and we need one more commissioner.
I can help with that.
You want that?
Yeah.
Timmy's on that with me then. So you just marked through one name and leave the Evans in there. Extension Advisory and Leadership Council. That's part of the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Board. I'm on that. I, if somebody else wants it, they're more than welcome to it. So I'll stay on it. Fairgrounds Board, that's another double commissioners. Bill Osburn was on that and we need to fill that vacancy.
I'd like to take that one. I'm sorry.
That's fine. Go ahead.
You sure?
Yeah, go ahead.
Who's on it?
Michelle.
Michelle's going to take that. Our Commissioners.
I will take that one there.
Greg, you want that one? Anybody else? High Country Council on Government.
I would like to do that one.
That one. Timmy's on that one then unless nobody else volunteered.
This one also goes, sort of goes in line with that, I think.
That one's vacated, you would like in?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Timmy's also on it. Drew will give us all the schedule, the dates and the times that these normally meet. And for the new members, you may want to get a set or two of the past minutes, you know, to get caught up a little bit. High Country Workforce Development Board, that's vacated. That one for Mr. Irwin? That wasn't on his list. Volunteer?
Take it.
Mark was on that one before.
I'll take it.
Greg's on it. Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. Mark Evans was on that, it's vacated right now.
So Greg, Greg was on High Country Workforce?
Greg's on High Country Workforce Development Board. Now we're on Home and Community Care Block Grant. Mark was on that before. Any volunteers? So I'll take it then. Juvenile Crime Prevention. That was vacated by Commissioner Mark Evans.
My mother is the director of that, so that's a conflict for me. So.
Mark or Timmy?
Mark, Mark doesn't really.
I mean, Timmy or Greg? Timmy or Greg?
I'll take it.
You want it?
I'll take it.
Greg gets it. Allegheny Chamber for Economic Development, Michelle's on it. I assume you want to stay?
Yes, sir.
Local Emergency Manage, Emergency Planning Committee, Michelle's also on it. She's going to stay. Vaya is one, I believe, that Commissioner Irwin expressed interest in.
I would like to stay on that board.
Excuse me?
I'd like to stay on that board. I've been serving on it.
You're on that one with Lisa. You're, you're staying there.
So what was the other committees he was asking for?
You still got a bunch to go.
Yeah, I've lost my. Outside of the Budget Committee, he had.
Water Authority.
He'd ask about the Virginia Carolina Water Authority, the Allegheny Group Home, which he has been, if I wrote down correctly, is on that, and Vaya, which we just talked about.
Partnership for Children Board, that was Mark Evans. Any volunteers? That was Bill Osburn on it. Northwest Regional Library Board.
Usually the person who takes the Allegheny Public Library takes the Northwestern.
Me on that, yeah.
So that's Greg. We bashful now.
Trying not to.
Partnership for Children's Board, that's vacated. That was the Mark Evans Board.
Do that.
Volunteers?
I do that.
Timmy's on it then. In Social Service, that's Michelle. She's still there. I assume you still want it. Virginia Carolina Water Authority Board, that's been vacated by Bill Osburn. I believe that's one that Commissioner John Irwin asked to be on. Anybody else? We'll give that to John Irwin.
Mr. Chairman, you, I'm also on that board. I don't know if that's included in that approval or not.
Well, we approve County Manager Michael Carter along with Commissioner John Irwin. Veterans Advisory Board, I've been on that since its inception. I'd like to stay. Joint Committee with the School Board, that was Mark Evans. That's been vacated along with myself.
I'll help you with that.
Timmy would like to be on that. We'll put your name down. Board of Equalization, that's, that's up to the board. At the time these meetings occur, we always just have to have a cool warm sort of volunteer deal at the last minute. We don't assign any specific commissioner to that board. Board of Equalization, same, same with that one, isn't it? Don't have a commissioner. It's the whole board. We just need a majority at that meeting. High Country RPO Rural Transportation.
I can try to do that.
Bill Osburn was on it. Timmy is volunteer. Timmy, you've got the nominating, these are sort of an ad hoc committee. Michelle's on that, Bill Osburn. Bill Osburn is off. Would somebody like to fill his position?
Question on that. Nominating Committee, because I'm new at this, what is, what are you nominating?
People that are nominated for certain boards outside of, outside of us, Planning Commission, what are some other ones? PDA, boards like that. We go through a vetting process.
Right.
And that, those boards may recommend and we may recommend that we approve.
I'll help with that if, we got, Michelle's on that?
Yes.
That's Michelle and now Timmy. Michelle and I are on the Insurance Committee, I assume we'll stay on that. Recreation Committee, that, there again, that's Michelle and myself. I'd like to stay, Michelle, I'm sure. Providence Committee, Michelle Luthman and Mark Evans, so that is vacated for Commissioner Mark Evans. Volunteers?
I'll take it.
And Greg is there. Configuration Change and Control Board, that's only one commissioner and we just meet just rarely. So I'll stay on that board. Now, there was question about the, about the Finance Committee. Like I say, normally for the last three years, that has been appointed by the chair and that happens, has been happening in January. I think one year we went as far as February, but we're moving up our Budget Committees this year to February. Budget Committee, you're going to spend roughly 90 to 100 hours during the work week, might be.
Not a work week.
No, I mean, not, not at one straight through. It takes us several months to, to come up with that number. So that's.
I'm willing to help in that, I just don't know when it happens.
Would you like for me to explain what we have done?
Yes.
Okay. So for the past few years, we've identified two days a week and most of the time it'll be a Tuesday, Thursday scenario. And we'll start early. We start 8:30, gives us time to get, you know, whatever fires out before we get going. And we'll run that thing at least till lunch, sometimes after lunch. So it could be a four hour day, it could be a six hour day, it could be an eight hour day. And typically, we start out with the revenues and that doesn't take as much time because those are internal projections. What takes the bulk of the time is, is we ask everyone who has submitted a request for funding to come in and talk about their request and go through their line items. So the bulk of the, the time that Commissioner Bobby had mentioned revolves around sitting down with those individuals or groups or agencies and learning more about what their needs are to incorporate it into the budget. So.
That's Tuesday and Thursday of how many, as long as it takes, I guess.
This year, I've let the cat out of the bag, probably going to look at getting budget submittals back roughly about February the 17th. So what we usually do is we take about a week after those submittals to put everything in order and then we'll start having those committee meetings. So tentatively on that schedule, we're looking around the 28th of February being the first meeting date and that'll run at a minimum of twice a week up until the month of May. And depending on, if we hit it, any, any challenges or discoveries along the way, we'll have to change accordingly. But it's, it's at least two times a week, March through May guarantee.
I can do that.
We've heard the explanation on the, on the Budget Committee. Timmy is volunteer. I, as chairman, will also be on that committee. Are there any other volunteers? If, if not, then I will, right now, appoint Timmy to that, that position.
I'll second it.
So that was the last, let me get this. That was the last committee. We need a motion in a second to, to approve all the committees that we've just gone through. Is there any discussion? I would ask.
I make a motion.
Discussion?
I make a motion.
I'll second it.
There's a motion in a second. Further discussion? None? All of those, please raise your hand. Any affirmative? Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you. Next is Rules of Procedure for the Board, and that's on page eight through 17. And I don't know that. This one was adopted in December of 2021, and I don't believe there's been any amendments to it since then or any changes. This is how the board is run, how it's organized. It's for your information. Mr. Carter, do you have anything to add? Or Heather, do you have anything to add? Any questions? I know there'll be questions over the next few months and everything, but this is sort of a go by roadmap for you. If not, we need a motion in a second to approve these, these rules of procedure that are presented to you. I need a motion in a second.
I make a motion.
Got a motion?
I'll second it.
Got a second? Any further discussion? All those signify by raising your hand. Any affirmative? Any votes and the negatives, same? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you. Next is a presentation to the Board, recommendation for new Fire Commissioner Chief Jason Long. Recommendation for new Fire Commissioner, uh, Chief Jason Long.
Good evening, new Commissioners and former Commissioners. I think you done appointed Greg, which, that's fine. Met, Fire Commission met back on November twenty-second, as part of Fire Department. And they're wanting to change some things up. It was unanimous, the folk were gonna start a Chiefs Council, like some of the other surrounding counties are doing. And they, we took a vote on our recommendation, uh, for the new Fire Commissioner, which is totally up to the Board of Commissioners. The recommendation was a tie vote between Michelle and John. So we was gonna leave that up to y'all to make the tie, but believe you done appointed one, which, that's rightfully your job. So to give you a little breakdown of what we're gonna do, um, all the Chiefs voted to, uh... Not do away with the Fire Commission Board, but to not meet as frequent and start a Chiefs Council. As we get into it and get our feet wet with that, and, and, and start our charter and all that stuff, I'll give you more details on that. It really don't affect, uh, as far as the County Commissioners goes. It's just where the Chiefs meet, kinda like the Fire Commissioners meeting, and work out those, those details. Then we'll bring those details to the Fire Commissioner to present to the Board. When we met October twenty-second, we was, we was under the impression that the former Fire Commissioner had done spoke to the Board and the County Manager of the minutes of that discussion for this recommendation, and apparently that's, did not happen. So, any questions for me? I'll try to answer them best as I can.
Any questions, Timmy, Michelle, Greg? No question. Thank you, Jason. Uh, now we're, uh, to general business. There's some information, I think, that Michael Carter wants to present to the Board about Deputy Clerk appointments. Michael?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just like to, um, identify an opportunity. I'm not asking for any type of appointment of, of anyone tonight. I'm just asking for consideration. And what this revolves around is currently, I think you just went through the process of appointing a clerk, and the responsibilities that go along with that. And Drew has, has served in that capacity and served well. But I think as, as time has passed, we have seen different examples that, that have demonstrated a need to consider possibly a Deputy Clerk in the absence of, in this case, the clerk and the duties that surround that position. And having, having that as a process and having the ability to make that designation, I think would allow for us to not react, but to be proactive in situations that may present in the future. So tonight, I'm just asking the Board if, if that is a process in which you would like to move forward with. And then allow me to, to do some work over the next couple of weeks to fine-tune it or detail it up a little better. But I'm just looking for a consensus tonight if there's an interest in having such an appointment in that absence.
Michelle?
She left.
She's gone. Were it comments?
Only thing, only thing I've heard comments about, this is not a paid position, right?
There's no compensation for it.
No compensation, but you said you was gonna probably use somebody already in-house to, to take that part.
It, it would be an existing employee...
Yeah.
With, with additional responsibility should that occur.
To me, it just sounds like common sense.
And Michael's just presenting this for information. He's asking for roughly a consensus on the Board for him to go ahead and, uh, formulate a plan and look at a potential candidate for this. So I, I think the Board's in agreement to, for you to proceed.
Thank you.
Twenty-twenty-three Holiday Calendar, Drew Todd.
In your Board's packet.
That's just for our information, and...
No.
Well, we need to vote on that one. Okay?
The state don't do President's Day.
Any questions?
So that's paid holidays employees get?
Yes.
Is it seventeen?
Twelve, I think.
Twelve.
Any questions, Timmy?
Motion to approve.
Greg, questions? Have a motion and need a second?
Second it.
Got a motion and a second to approve the, uh, the Holiday Calendar for 2023? Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed, same? Motion carries three oh. Twenty-twenty-three Meeting Schedule, Drew Todd again. And you also want to vote on this one?
Yes.
Any questions about moving those, uh, regular meeting dates to the next day after?
I'll make a motion to move them.
Your second?
Second.
Got a second? Any further questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, likewise? Vote carries three oh. Uh, Surplus Property, Drew Todd again.
The Board approved... Approved the bid... After resolution. Thousand-dollar bid. Approving this... Whether bids...
The bids can be upset, and that can go on and on and on, or no one upsets, and then it's finalized. And they've made their down payment...
Yes.
To the Board.
What surplus property is this?
Wasn't very big.
William and Hayes Subdivision.
What's property?
Yeah.
What's property? Like an acre of land or something?
Lot thirteen of the William Hayes Subdivision. Lee Creek Township.
The bid ain't right now one thousand dollars. If it's posted, you got so many days to upset the bid.
Yes.
And anybody can upset that bid. Anybody. Any other questions? Need a motion and a second to keep moving forward.
We're in motion to, are we doing a motion to accept the bid, or are we motion to...
Adopt this resolution.
Adopt a resolution. A motion to adopt a resolution, then.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of a motion to adopt a resolution to proceed signify by saying aye? Or raise your right hand, I'm sorry. Likewise, for a nay vote. Motion carries three oh. And that's all. We now move to Item D.
I'm sorry, you...
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got it. Approval of Sheriff's Bond, that's a state requirement.
Yeah, it was, um...
We need to vote on this one also.
Just approve the Sheriff's Bond.
Bond money, bond.
How much was the bond?
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-five?
That's not the cost, that, the bond is...
Yeah.
Any discussion, questions? Need a motion and a second?
Motion to approve Sheriff's Bond.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. Any opposed? Now we're finished with that. I'm sorry, I skipped that one. County Manager, comments?
It's a few, Mr. Chairman. First of all, uh, I want to take the opportunity to welcome Commissioner Greg Walker and Commissioner Timmy Evans on your election, as well as you, Commissioner Bobby Irwin. All three of you won the election, all three of you sitting here. So I want to congratulate all three of you in, in one token. The next one is just a couple informational things. Our last meeting, we talked about Ninety South Main and some of the bid amounts that came in, and... Just to reiterate that, you know, the, the bid amounts for the demolition and reconstruction of that front portion of the building, the low bid came in just under a million dollars. And for the plan was to allow myself and, and our engineering architect and the state, who has a, a big piece in this puzzle, to, to talk about scenarios with that. And we're doing that. I just want to identify today that I, I think there will be some recommendations on, on trimming some of the features that were identified within that bid. But hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to come back at your day meeting and actually talk about what those, those trimmings could be, and, and what contributions, and who will this, and who will that. So it hasn't gone anywhere. We're still waiting on the contractor to make some communication and, you know, guarantee some things. But I feel confident at your mid-month meeting, we'll have a, a formal recommendation for that. Next one is, is actually today, I finished up the State Capital Improvement Fund Award information for the four-hundred thousand dollars for the, uh... Steps in the swimming pool to, to be taken. So that has now been submitted. I actually got a confirmation back that it's been signed by all parties. So that, that project is now, you know, into a movable project as well. So that was, that was pretty good today. I will remind everyone that we continue to work on the transition of dispatch from the Sheriff's Department to this facility. And, uh... There's a couple of things that's gotta occur. There's a couple of items on the tower that need to be worked out. Got a console that's still waiting to be delivered. But I think what our bigger, bigger concern at the moment is, is putting people in those seats. And as, I know as Commissioner Bobby, you, you're the, and I don't mean this the wrong way, but you're the Senior Commissioner here right now, and...
Very same.
But you, you've understood the transition throughout your time. But what will happen at your mid-month December meeting also is, is there are challenges to how the Sheriff's Office can hire individuals under the Sheriff's control. Now, in this transition, the dispatchers, the center itself, everything, will come to this facility and no longer be under the Sheriff's control.
What department will that be under, the dispatch?
As, as, it will be its own department. We'll have a supervisor of that, but it'll be its own department. Now, one of the things that wasn't, you know, realized at first was the Sheriff, whenever they hire individuals, they have to go through a psyche valve. They have to do a, a lot of extra things that, uh, what I'll say, a, a regular county employee does not. And that has to do with the nature of what they do. So we're having discussions now, although the center itself will still be at the Sheriff's Office until we complete the renovations. We've had discussions about going ahead and transitioning those employees under the control of, of the county, as opposed to the Sheriff's Office. That will allow us a, a different pool to, to pick from, from those employees. And we're getting to a condition to where staffing is a, is a concern. So at your mid-month December meeting, we'll also formally, the Sheriff is going to come, and he's going to formally hand it over, I guess is how you'd say it, to, for the county to accept it. And we're already advertising for people to fill those positions. We're already taking those steps to encourage people to apply, so... We got a lot of bright spots ahead of us here in the next few months. Could be on track, the grants that go along with that. Nine-one-one Center, they have to be closed out by the end of the month. So we're trying to finalize everything, get all the invoices in the right place, get it taken care of. So I think we're... All I have, unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions, Greg, Timmy? Um, that's all your comments, it? That's enough. Thank you. You're welcome. Can we come to County Commissioners' comments, and I'll start with Greg.
Ain't really gotten a, a whole lot of comment. Just, uh, look forward to working with everybody in the county, county employees, the rest of the Commissioners. And I appreciate the opportunity that the public has given me to do this.
Thank you. Me?
I'm really a lot, um... I know that then, sort of same, sort of the same, down the same path that Greg was talking, that... Really, really do appreciate the opportunity that the people has allowed me to, to come up and be a part of decision-making in the county. Look forward to, uh, you know, getting, digging into some of these things. That's, uh, always been a sort of a curiosity to me, but at the same time, to different things that I think I could probably help with. Especially in the budgeting. I know Bobby spends a lot of time in the budgeting. Matter of fact, you take time off so much, your wife thinks she's, you, she's, you've left her. But anyway, um...
She likes for me to be gone.
And we did have a really nice meeting of the heads of the department today. Was really neat to meet all the, the people that make the things work at the county, and know a lot of those folks. And man, they, uh, dealt with a lot of them, and I'm really tickled with the group that we got to work with. And, uh, was talking to Michael today. Really do appreciate that we do have a manager that understands, um, how to keep our house in order. So I look forward to all those different things. And at the same time, I, I do have to, uh... I'm trying to remember to keep my County Commissioner hat on. I've never been in the situation where I talk for people. I always talk for myself. So, um, I will do my best to listen to everybody's thoughts and advice, and try to put all those good things together. and try to put all those good things together that we can to make, you know, to try to make life easier for people, make things better. So, I look forward to that, all those different discussions. That's all I got.
Thank you. I would like to start out and thank the voters for re-electing me, I appreciate it. I'd like to thank the Commissioners for voting for me, for Chairman, for Michelle, for Vice Chairman. I think that we made a good step tonight, letting Commissioner John Irwin come back on the Board. In this Board, we want to treat everybody as if they were talking to us or talking to our mother or our sisters or daughters. We just want to be civil to everybody. The podium is not an attack place for Commissioners to attack people. When they come in, present the information that they have, we may not agree with it, but I think that we should act in a very civil manner. I'd like to comment, the town, the lights look great. I think Main Street looks great, got some Christmas trees up and everything looks nice. And I'd like to thank the town for doing that. The Chamber, I'm sure, had their fingerprints in there someplace. I'm just thankful for these, the Christmas that's coming up. I'd like to say, got one more meeting, but never hurts to say Merry Christmas to everybody. And I've liked to say that several times this year. We'll have one more meeting, scheduled meeting, for this month, and then we'll go into our modified meetings in January. That's all I've got. Heather? You're a lawyer, you're supposed to talk.
I've talked all day long.
Oh, okay. Drew? Tight-lipped Drew. If there's no other business before the Board, I would call us adjourned. Thank you.
I want you to use that hammer for the first timer, Bob.
Thank you, Timmy.
Welcome, sir.
Appreciate you.
You're welcome.